Good evening, it's 6:30 on call to be in order. It's Tuesday, June 18th, 6:30 PM. This is the June 18th Business Session of the Olentangie Schools Board of Education. Actually, for those here, we've got some new faces, so that introductions again would probably be appropriate. I'm Kevin O'Brien, we're President. To my left, your right is Stacy Dunbar, Vice President of the Board, Dave King, Board Member, Todd Johnson, our interim Treasurer. Going this way, to my right, your left is Dr. Lucas, our Superintendent, Julie Arianna Fiesel, Board Member, and Adam White, a Board Member. Okay? So with that, could we please call the meeting to order and call the roll?
Ms. Dunbar?
Here.
Ms. Fiesel?
Here.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mr. White?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, on the agenda, we've got some changes to the agenda.
We do.
Propose the amendments first, and then we'll go through the approval process. So I've got one first on Board Action Item A, the appointment of Mr. Kern as Treasurer. The date should be August 1st, 2013, through July 31st, 2016. Printed Agenda says 17. The contract is correct, the Agenda was incorrect, so one amended Agenda since 2016. And I know, Dr. Lucas, you have some other ones?
Yes, you've been provided with addendums to the Agenda. As this is June and July next month, we'll have many of these because this is hiring season. So if you'll notice, the addendums to the Agenda, most of those are certified staff members. We're hiring new teachers, and of course, as we hire new teachers, we also bring them in for the New Teacher Academy. So we'll be adding some items to Item 7. We have some resignations that just came in. We also have Item 22, we're asking to approve certified unpaid leave of absence. And last but not least, Item 23, we have a student taking the summer OTT that needs translation services, and we are asking for approval for Andrew Rock to provide that service at $400. And under classified staff, you can see that we are hiring some people and accepting the retirement of one. And that would be all of the addendums. One other, if you notice on Exhibit C7, I just wanted to verify extended additional contract days for technology aides. That's up to 10 days total for the entire department. I didn't want anyone to think we were giving 10 days to all 18 employees. It's 10 days total for that department. We just wanted to make sure that we clarified that.
Okay.
All right?
All right, so I will entertain a motion to approve the Agenda as amended?
I will.
I'll second.
Any discussion on the Agenda as amended? Okay, seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes. Okay. Next item's Item 5, Board Presidents' Report. We've got two items. One is the recognition of students for extracurricular achievements. We'll start with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Dunbar.
Each year, the Olentangie Board of Education recognizes students and staff members for their outstanding achievements in co-curricular, extracurricular, or athletic activities. In May, we recognized more than 100 students, coaches, and advisors. Now that spring sports have come to an end, we're happy to recognize and congratulate another 18 students, five teams, and one coach. As I call each person's name, please come up to receive your award and pose for a photograph. The photos will be mailed to you in the next few weeks. Let's start with our track teams. Join me in congratulating our six state qualifiers from Olentangie High School. Maranice Baumann. Jeffrey Clark. Emily Ginter. Ramal Iverson. Colin McShane. Daniel Rubel. Our track state qualifiers from Olentangie Liberty High School are Andrew Johnston. Claire Lynn. Sarah Miller. Zachary Van Gundy. And Claire Wiles. Next, from Olentangie Orange High School, Kaitlin Daniels, first-place state. She's not here.
She's in here.
Kylie Spring, state qualifier. Travis Napper, state placer in the track wheelchair competition. Now, let's move on to lacrosse and congratulate Coach Zachary Peterson and the boys' lacrosse team from Olentangie High School on their OCC championship. From that team, let's congratulate Eric Milleron, winner of the Bob Scott All-American Award. Not to be outdone by the boys, Olentangie High School's girls' lacrosse team was once again OCC champions this year. Let's congratulate Coach Chelsea Huguenard and the team. From Olentangie Liberty High School, let's congratulate Eileen Barrett, first-team All-State girls' lacrosse. Now, let's move on to baseball at Olentangie Liberty High School, where we have a player who was named first-team All-Ohio. Congratulations to Jacob Negemeyer. And the team. Hold on. Let's, now, let's, next, let's congratulate Olentangie Orange High School's Paul Trick, first-team All-State. Paul, along with Coach Phil Callahan, helped lead their team to an OCC championship. Congratulations to the team and Coach Callahan. We also have a softball team to recognize this evening. Congratulations to Coach Alan Tharp and the Olentangie High School softball team on its OCC championship. Let's also congratulate Olentangie Liberty High School softball coach Bob Lee on being named the OCC Co-Coach of the Year. Bob's team was also OCC champions. Finally, congratulations to Olentangie Liberty Boys volleyball coach Dave Hale and his team on winning the district championship. Great job, everyone. You are all welcome to stay, especially to see us get this next award, but then we understand if you have to leave.
Okay, next, let's hear one name. Ali Springs, by the way, is the Olentangie Liberty, not Olentangie Orange. I want to talk to that too. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. So next on the item, on the Agenda is Item B, Presentation of the Honor of State Award, recognizing results of the last district audit. Mr. Servick, if there's any.
Lots of awards tonight, won't they?
Yes.
Good place to be. I'm Kevin Servick, I'm with the Auditor of State's Office. Forgive me for not arriving a little bit sooner, there's a little bit of traffic coming up here, which I'm sure no shot. So basically, the Auditor of State Award with distinction, we give those out to entities that have a clean audit report, and not just that they go above and beyond in the CAF or, and a clean report just means that there's no findings for recovery, material citations, material weaknesses, significant deficiencies or single audit findings or question costs. To put it in perspective, our office audits about 5,700 entities in Ohio, and we give out just over 100 of these a year, so really it's been honoring. Just want to say congratulations and very same word.
Thank you very much, and Todd, thank, obviously you and your staff for that achievement. Okay, we will now go in, or I'll accept the motion to go into Executive Session. We're going into the Executive Session to consider the employment compensation of public employees. We will return and take action after Executive Session. I would expect it to be 15, 20 minutes. We'll try to be brief and get back as quick as we can, so, please make a motion.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Dunbar?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Servick.
I thought I was going to be speaking in this big group. Now look.
I know. Dr. Lucas is disappointed that everybody left.
He said I had to speak.
He had this great speech.
I was with this big dude.
He introduced ourselves for that.
They heard I was talking, and they all left.
That's right. So I guess we overachieved, we're a little crockery than we thought, so I guess we'll go right back into session, and then next up is the Superintendent's Report.
As I said at the table, I thought I was going to be speaking in this big crowd, and now thank you for standing, even though it's your floor.
Thank you.
Linda, you cannot leave. We have a lot of things on the Agenda, as I put in my update, because this is June. But as you also know, this is the time we do a lot of hiring. Next month, we will have our Board Meeting actually on July 9th, because as you also recall from the past, on July 10th, that's the deadline to whether people can get out of their contract or not, and that's the reason we try to get as many people hired as we can. We're going to talk a little bit about that. A few good things right off the bat, it doesn't seem that long ago, but we had graduation, and it was a great, great day. It always is a great day in Olentangie. This year, for the first time, we had more than 1,000 graduates. In fact, I think it was 1,050. I also like to kind of compare that to what's coming in. As you can see, we anticipate 1,279 incoming kindergarten students. We anticipate 1,359 first graders. Now, always keep in mind, we'd like to compare more, the reason I put first graders up there is because some of our kindergarteners go to an all-day, everyday program outside of the district, then they return. So it's more accurate to compare our graduates to our first graders, so you know what that variance really is. Just to give you another idea, by the way, looking at the enrollment trends, second graders will have about 1,500, third graders about 1,500. So we're starting to see that flatten out of the elementary enrollment, and we've talked a lot about that as we move that bubble through the middle schools and the high schools. Graduation, total scholarships awarded, $36 million. And I know I already talked a lot about Senior Awards Night and where we are sending our kids, but once again, to have the privilege of shaking the hand of all 1,050 of them, we are in very good hands in the future. I feel very good and very proud about not only our students, but our staff members and how they are preparing, and obviously, we're very proud of our parents, because without the support of this community, we would be struggling as a school system, as any school system would struggle without support. Another thing I want to talk a little bit about, we've talked here several times about what do teachers do in the summer, and you know, it's been somewhat of a misnomer that they work only nine months. If you come by here in the summer, if you, any day, pick any day, it's hard to get a parking space here, because we have approximately 800 staff members enrolled in our professional development this summer. Now, keep in mind, we have approximately 1,100 teachers, so the high majority of those individuals are coming to our very own professional development programs that we offer and provide, and we're very proud of that, and our individuals work extremely hard in the summer to get better at what they do. So come by any day, by the way, and check the parking lot out, and it will be hard to get a parking spot. Other good things taking place, we had the Regional Invention Convention winners, I'm not going to name all of those, but you can look down through some of the inventions, quite, you know, the dump stump, the site stick, one more call, so on and so forth. We have, again, very proud of our students and our staff members that work with these students and get to that invention convention. We also have the time of year where we honor our Teachers of the Year and Employees of the Year. And again, I'm not going to go over each one of these, but we will be recognizing these individuals in the fall at a football game, whether it be at Liberty, Olentangie, or Orange. We also announced the Teacher of the Year, Employee of the Year on our Convocation Day. So I know most of you do attend that day, so when you're there, none of these individuals know who won that. They know I won it for my building, but that day, we bring them up in front of their peers and recognize them as our Employee of the Year. So here are the elementary teachers, and here are the secondary teachers and other departments. Many of those names look very familiar, as you know, some of those individuals have presented to the Board, some of those individuals, for example, Deb Carpenter, if you work insurance, you know Deb Carpenter. And we're very proud of these individuals, and I might add that Judy Muntin has been awarded the Employee of the Year, and that kind of ties into this next slide, one of the good things, or I say great things, we missed Judy tremendously, and we had a Memorial Tree Dedication Ceremony on June 3rd at Hyatt's Middle School in her honor. I know her son graduated from Liberty this year. It was just a sad, sad time for Olentangie Schools and the entire community, and we honored her memory with a planting of the tree on June 3rd. Race to the Top, I always give you a quick report, believe it or not, the fiscal year four has been submitted. It just seems like last year, we were talking about Race to the Top, and we have, budget request has been submitted, our scope of work has been submitted, professional development, Thinkgate Software, and I think originally, we were talking about $42,000. Well, that's grown $4,000 to $46,000 for year four. Not a whole lot of money, but I can't say enough about the fact that our staff has to be at the table, wanted to be at the table, and really, a lot of this, our new teacher evaluation system in the state of Ohio was a direct result of the fact that our teachers were at the table from the very beginning, and we're somewhat of a model district, and we're very much ahead of the curve in regard to OTES, and we will continue to be, because our individuals want to be at the table and want to be at the cutting edge. Little hiring updates, we have 82.5 potential positions, this changes by the second. I know earlier today, I think that number was around 75, it's now 82. 34.5 of those were for enrollment growth, 48 to cover resignations, retirements, and leaves. We'll continue to have those up through July 10th. We have 57 and a half new teachers hired so far. I know Mr. Marsh is not with us this evening, but he feels very good where he is right now as a department from an HR standpoint in regard to our new hiring, and as you know, Gail, come August 14th, which by the way, is our first day of school this year, that number will be down to zero. We'll have everyone hired and ready to go, and we're very much looking forward to that. We are closely monitoring the enrollment figures to make sure we're going to need all staff members for those remaining openings. And again, just because someone leaves doesn't mean we just hire someone. We look at the position and continue to stay as efficient as we possibly can, and again, I think that's why we are able to keep our cost per pupil down in the $9,500 range. School funding legislation, I can't let another meeting get by without updating you on that. As you may or may not recall, we've been down to the House, we've been down to the Senate. Many individuals have stepped forward in this district on this school funding legislation. It is now in Conference Committee, it's been through the House, it's been through the Senate, it now goes to the Conference Committee. There are six individuals basically holding the fate of all 614 school districts in the state of Ohio, four Republicans, two Democrats, and they're trying to craft a school funding formula or school funding budget that will appease everyone, and that is impossible, absolutely impossible. We've been at the forefront in the testifying standpoint. I know Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Johnson have accompanied me at many meetings, whether it be down at the state Capitol, whether it be here, just this past week, we had Representative Brenner here, we had Congressman Teaberry, he's Chief of Staff here. By the way, I can't say enough about Mr. Teaberry and his efforts. He's been very diligent. He has probably contacted me more than any representative that we have, and it's very gratifying to know and understand that, and we just like to see the others get on board like that. The last meeting we had with Representative Brenner, I was accompanied by Mr. O'Brien and Mr. Johnson, and two community members, Bill Bishop and Diamond Fursten, and we will continue to talk up through June 30th. We are still pushing for that sliding game cap, and what we're asking for is to be funded at a rate that kind of correlates with our growth trend over the last five years. The cap, as you may recall, was originally six, the Senate version changed to six and a half and 10 and a half in the two-year budget. In the five years, past five years, we've grown 25%. So the six and the 10 and a half does not even come close to covering the cost of our new students. In fact, the 25% does not cover the cost of our new students, but it comes really close to covering the cost of our new students, and we will continue to push that. Another individuals, another individuals that's worked extremely hard in our district, Steve Cutler. I don't know if you know Steve, but if you don't know Steve and/or do know Steve, stick out a hand and say thank you, because he has gone above and beyond the call of duty for this school district down at the Capitol. He knows a lot of individuals, he spends a lot of time there, we appreciate all of his efforts in regard to this whole school funding legislation. I will remind everyone here and here and anyone listening, any help from the Legislature will result in tax relief for the residents of the Olentangie Local School District. I'll say this again, for 10 years, we've shouldered the burden of almost 10,000 new students coming into our school system, totally shouldered by local tax deficits, totally, not only from the operating standpoint, but from the building standpoint. We now have approximately $400 million worth of facilities, none of that came from the OSFC. All of that was raised locally and continues to be raised locally. As you know, we were the poster child when it came to the Governor's original proposal, but what no one wants to talk about is the fact that we've grown three school districts in 10 years, three average-sized school districts at zero funding, zero funding. I'm going to talk a long time about this, so that everyone in this school district knows and understands that help at the legislative level equals tax relief for our residents. We'll continue to pound on that, because it's well-deserved, and our individuals have shouldered the burden for the past decade. Testing results, this is the season, as they say, preliminary OAA and OTT results will be coming in this month. The Curriculum Department, Mr. Fede, Mr. Rafe, they've been already looking at those as they come in. The OTT obviously was the first to come in, preliminary data to identify the trends. This is also the time you'll see teachers, you'll see building principals digging into the data. In fact, they probably already started digging into the data.
Oh, yeah.
The final scores and the new state report cards will be released in September. One thing I want to remind everyone, we've talked about this for two years, but I'm a firm believer, you have to hear some things seven times and some things 21 times, so I'm going to say this a lot. We started the transition to the Common Core and new state standards in 2011, 2012. At that Board Meeting, remember, I told you, there's going to be a few transition years when we are implementing the Common Core and being tested on the OAA, meaning many of the critics of public schools will say, "All you do is teach to the test." Well, we are transitioning to the Common Core, and we're testing on the OAA. So we're not teaching to the test, we're teaching to a set of standards, and those standards will be fully implemented next year, and I believe the state assessment for those standards will be fully aligned by '14, '15. So our report card, and again, I'm not saying this to make any type of excuse, because I feel very confident in our individuals as far as what our performance index will be, but we're making that transition, and we are implementing the new and being tested on the old. So just keep that in mind as those scores come in, and we'll continue to monitor those, but I have great, great faith and a lot of pride in our individuals, Mr. Rafe, Mr. Fede, Mrs. Martin, all those individuals at the central office level, and then following that right on down to the building level with our building principals, with our staff members, the teacher in front of, a quality teacher in front of our kids on a daily basis, I think we're going to be just fine. Other Agenda items, we'll hear an Affordable Health Care Update, that's going to be coming up very soon. We'll hear from Mr. Fede about our CIP update, our intervention that we provide, and our state report card response. We'll have an Athletic Handbook update, 2013, '14. As they say, this is the season of the student handbooks, now the athletic handbooks. We'll have an update on our drug use issues in regard to how we have brought forth the drug testing back into the system, how we have brought forth the K-9 searches back into the system, and I believe Mr. Gordon's going to give us a little update on how those routines or those procedures have been going, and I think that will lead us into what we've already started talking about. In fact, we've talked, started this talk in approximately February of this year. The formation of a drug task force, not only at the local level, and by the way, Randy Wright will be heading up that local-level effort, but we'll also be doing that at the county level. We had a superintendent, county superintendent's meeting two weeks ago, and Steve Hedge with the Mental Health Services, and Sheriff Martin with the law enforcement piece, and the school systems of Delaware County, all going together in regard to this whole attack on the drug issue, not only of Delaware County, but of the United States. And I think our most precious resource, as we all know, would be our young people. A lot of temptations out there, a lot of opportunities, I guess, or non-opportunities to make bad decisions. We're going to tackle this issue, and sometimes it's not going to be very comfortable as we tackle this issue, but this is an issue that's going to get a lot of attention coming forward, and Mr. Gordon will start that tonight, giving you a little bit of an update on how we are doing here locally. We're also filling some open administrative positions. We're also filling some open administrative positions. Our Transportation Supervisor, Amy Morgan, she just came over from Marysville, probably two months ago, I believe you approved her hiring as a supervisor, and now she's moving up into a higher position. We also have Bill Warfield on the agenda as the Old Tangi Liberty High School Assistant Principal. Bill has served the last five years, I believe, at Orange Middle School. He did his student teaching at Liberty High School. Now, as I said, he's going home, and I know he's going to do a great job. Other agenda items, we're employing new teachers for 2013-14. I did throw this one in because this one got a lot of attention. As you know, Mr. Twilliger retired as football coach at Old Tangi High School. Mark Solis will be taking over there as a new OHS football coach. You'll probably get the opportunity to meet him very soon. I know he's practicing from 5:00 to 9:00 right now, this week, not tonight, but starting tomorrow night, and a lot of excitement taking place there in regard to the football situation at OHS. Extended service contract days, I just want to bring that forward. We made that change in the agenda because it kind of looked like we were providing 10 days for everyone in technology, that's 10 days total, but also I wanted to make sure we emphasize the fact, extended service contract days is something we offer every year. Those are the individuals that come to work a few days earlier and make sure the school's up and ready in regard to whether it's a leave position, secretarial position, things like that. Professional development for online course is on the agenda, and again, I think we're really moving forward in regard to this whole online piece. We have a lot to talk about that this year. I'm not going to talk a lot about it tonight, but you're going to hear a lot more about that whole professional development piece, because those online courses are going to be vital for us moving forward in our organization. Staffing changes, as you know, in communications and technology, Karen went to Upper Arlington. I tell her I'm mad at her, but obviously I'm kidding, she did a great, great job. Will be filling that position very soon. Devin has done a great job filling in for Karen, and of course Keith is moving on to New Albany, and we have a few things coming forward in regard to filling that position, whether it may be a technology management service to transition us over. We'll continue to talk about that, and that will be coming forward in the July agenda. Last but not least, we're approving two new SROs, School Resource Officers. As you recall, we had the community forum, I believe it was in February, where Sheriff Martin offered up an additional two, and of course that is a split cost between the Sheriff's Department and the school system. I think we heard at that meeting that night, if I recall, that some people would like School Resource Officers in every building. That's just not feasible, that's the bottom line. We are adding two though, and that will allow some of our SROs to get into our middle school elementaries even more. As you know, right now, they're based, the three we have will be based in each high school, and they get to the middle schools and elementaries as much as they can. This will allow more attention and focus at the middle school and elementary level. That concludes superintendent's report for June. I will entertain any questions that you may have.
Two quickies for it, so for adding two, it's total SROs now, five?
Yes. We will have five.
One at each high school, one at each?
We will have one at each high school. We have one that I believe is dedicated to middle schools and one more dedicated to the elementary level. They'll probably, though, be housed at the middle school level, but the one is more dedicated to elementary and the other more dedicated to middle schools.
And enrollment, when will we get a stronger sense of?
Usually our enrollment projections come out November is really when we bring the young in. Right now, we are minus 179. I say minus 179, we put those enrollment reports out every two weeks. The one that just came out this past Monday, we have approximately 17,900, I want to say 50. We're supposed to have 18,100, and right now, all we're doing is moving, advancing grade levels. In other words, if you were here last year, we're advancing you forward in whatever withdrawals we have so far. So when I say minus 179, that means we're 179 short. We're actually 14 over at the high school. I believe the number was five over at the middle school, so we're really down at the elementary, which again goes back to that enrollment trend that we've been seeing over the past two years, that our elementaries are done growing, and really, that's good news.
But we always see an influx in August.
Yes, we do. We will know much more on the first day of school, as they say, when you get rears in seats and you go around and actually count the kids, we'll get a much better grasp of that, and of course, the young will probably be here in October or November to give a specific.
Can we get someone to come in to maybe educate us in the future on what other public schools are doing for the safety? Like if we can find someone that speaks, I don't know, like whether it's armed some teachers or having, you know, law enforcement or military come in to do private?
In fact, we've already done that from an administrative standpoint. We've trained all administrators. As you recall, Mr. Marsh has been diligent in his efforts for school safety. We brought, I believe it was May 7th, we trained all of our administrators. We had 75 individuals at that training. We now are taking it more from what's called ALIS training, you all recall that. Every employee in our organization by the end of this upcoming school year will be trained in ALIS training by the end of the year. The majority of those will be done by the, probably the holiday break, so we're very, very in tune with the whole safety issue, and we'll continue to do so. Again, I can't say enough about Mr. Marsh in regard to how much he has gone forward and been trained. He's been to a lot of trainings, a lot of professional development, and Sheriff Martin has been working hand-in-hand with him, so we feel very safe. But again, you can never relax on the safety issue, and I'll be glad to bring Sheriff Martin in. He's very, very willing to come and talk to the board. We can have that in an upcoming work session, absolutely.
He was here before, and he was at the community forum too.
Yes.
He did a great job at the community forum.
He did a great job.
Good 90-minute kind of presentation on his observations, what schools are doing. I know the majority of the board had the opportunity to attend that.
Yes.
It was really good, so we should talk through, Glenn would bring that content back, but certainly that community forum was very helpful on bringing us up to speed on what trends are going on in the school community.
Right, I know Mr. Gordon and Jen Isen, is Jen back?
Yep.
They've both been through the ALIS training. They could tell you a lot more than what I could specifically about what's going on from a training standpoint, because they've been through the training already. And I know, what is it, Jen, August 2nd? Is it August 2nd when we're going to have ALIS training with the administrators?
Yes.
Yes, so we're staying on top of it. Anything else?
Nope.
Thank you all.
Treasurer's report, Mr. Johnson?
One item of note in the Treasurer's Action Items is the Fiscal Year 14 appropriations. You know, one particular difficulty in projecting the appropriations for Fiscal 14 was our federal funds this year, due to the federal sequestration. You know, we already talked about our Build America bonds, but that also had an impact on our federal funds as well, and we anticipated that we were going to be losing some money compared to previous years. And just recently, the Fiscal Year 14 federal allocations were released, and we did end up losing funding. In total, comparing to the Fiscal Year 13 original allocations, looking to what the Fiscal Year 14 allocations are, there's a decrease just over 4%, so it works out to be about $115,000 that we lost. But that's really only half of the story, because typically, you know, as you know, a growing district, typically our federal funds would at least slightly increase each year. So if you compare back to Fiscal 12 and comparing that to Fiscal 13, those allocations, we actually increased them about 6.7%, so that was an increase of $173,000. So if you look at the loss of money compared to as well, not getting any growth that we typically would have got, you know, ultimately, it's really a loss of closer to about $300,000. So that is significant. And talking about the sequestration, also mentioned the Build America bonds, the refunding as well as the new money sale will be on June 26th. You know, this issue, looking at the federal funding cuts as well as the Babs, just brings to the point, the purpose of this refunding is really to eliminate the risk to our taxpayers. You know, they've cut us once, we don't know what cuts may be coming in the future. And the impact of the cut in May, we received our interest subsidy from our Build America bonds, it was 8.7% less, which resulted in a loss of about $50,000. I do want to point out that only about 5% of Build America bonds that were issued actually have the provision that allows you to recall the bonds at face value. Unfortunately, Old Tangi is one of those entities. And at the same time, we're fortunate based on the market, while we're able to go out there and refund these bonds to reduce the risk, we're also able to save some money for our taxpayers as well.
I forgot to ask you today about the, it's on Exhibit B2, 5 of 57, it talks about the variance for retirement benefits, and it talks about the SERS payment, and said it was insufficient to cover the cost. What was, can you explain that?
Yeah, it's really, it's not really a savings, it's really a timing issue. Our SERS payment is deducted out of the revenue we get from our state foundation funding, and based on how they break out the money each month, we got kind of an increase earlier in the year, which means the payments that we're getting later in the year are a little bit lower, so there's really not enough to take that deduction out. So instead of doing that deduction, what they're going to do is they'll end up billing us in July. So, you know, that number will probably end up doubling in June, so you'll see, you know, a larger variance come next meeting, but then in July, we'll end up getting billed for the difference.
No change in expense, it's just a change of how they're getting their money, yeah, because of the timing issue.
I think we've had that before.
Yeah, I would assume probably, just because our foundation payment is relatively low.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, next sentence, Public Participation for General Comments, do you have any?
Yes, we have one.
Let me guess, Mr. Solomon?
You guessed right.
Okay.
But actually, tonight, first of all, Carl Solomon, Liberty Township, 2135 Sherborn Lane. I wanted to talk tonight about something Dr. Lucas and I talked about before the meeting, and that is the proposed Joint Economic Development Zone. Just as we have oftentimes disagree and sometimes agree on issues, and we agree on the state funding issue, this is an issue that I think we need to know more about. Last night, I attended the Liberty Township Board of Trustees meeting, and I also attended the one last Friday, which was hastily put together for purposes of presenting a Joint Economic Development Zone contract draft, which I have here in my hand. I also obtained on Friday, at the Friday afternoon meeting, a map, which is the Post-Joint Economic Development Zone, which includes the locations of Old Tangi School District buildings that are considered to be in the proposed zone, in addition to the Columbus Zoo, the Delaware County Water Company, and a couple of other entities. Now, the significance of this zone is that it would levy an income tax on people that work in the zone. So for example, employees of the school district that work within the boundaries of Powell or Liberty Township would be given an income tax, would be required to pay an income tax. Now, this Economic Development Zone, if adopted, and it has to be approved by the voters, by the way, there is going to be a public hearing on the matter in July, and I think the announcement of that meeting is going to be made next week. The purpose of my comments tonight, though, is that I think we need to look at this very carefully. I'm concerned about singling out a small group of people that happen to work for the school district and require them to pay an income tax. I'm concerned that this contract, this proposed contract, which has apparently been talked about for almost two years, which we learned Friday, even though the Board of Trustees has never formally approved any kind of study, and even though obviously legal expenses were incurred, in my opinion, without the approval of board action, I think there are a number of issues associated with this that cause me concern. There was an attorney present at last night's meeting that I was able to ask some questions of. One of the concerns I have is that this Joint Economic Development Zone is administered by a non-elected, non-elected group of officials, and I always get nervous when I hear about non-elected officials managing a government entity. And this really is another layer of government that would be superimposed over the residents of this area. And it's an agreement between the City of Powell, the City of Bexley, and Liberty Township. So I have concerns about this, I wanted to share them with you. I'm happy to show you this map, but there's certainly, I think, going to be copies available at the public hearing. But I think, I have some concerns about this, and I think that, by the way, Trustee Melahan last night, Melanie Lenihan, I'm sorry, spoke strongly against this last night. She's very much opposed to this jet seat. This is being promoted by Mr. Seibert and Ms. Carducci, who are members of our Board of Trustees in Liberty. I'm sorry, one minute. And so I think that, again, I have some concerns about this. I haven't decided how active I'm going to be and whether I'm going to actively oppose this, but I have concerns, and I'm leaning in the direction of opposing this thing, because I think there are a lot of problems associated with it. I don't think it saves any money, I think the township's looking at it as a revenue stream in the scheme of things, I don't think it's going to, because obviously, one of the things that Dr. Lucas and I talked about is, if you increase somebody's taxes, guess what's going to happen at the bargaining table when they sit down and negotiate a union contract? So I don't see this as saving the township money, I think it's ultimately going to cost our community more, and it imposes an additional layer of government that I have concerns about, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Carl. I believe you said that name on everybody.
Yes.
So you should have received in your inbox some information from Dr. Lucas on this issue, and I do think it is something that we as a board need to get close to.
Yes.
Because in addition to the income issue, in some respects, it could determine how people make job choices, right? I'm going to work on this set of districts, so it's paying a tax versus this set of districts we're due, and that could be a very problematic. There could be some very unintended consequences of that action.
Yes.
That we need to be close to. Thank you, Carl, for bringing that up.
Thank you.
On to discussion items. First up is the Affordable Health Care Act. So as Dr. Lucas mentioned, Stephen Keller from Aon Hewitt, our benefits consulting firm is here to give us some perspective on the impact of the Affordable Health Care Act and how that may push its way through our benefit system. So thanks, Steve, good to see you.
Good to see you, buddy. Appreciate the opportunity.
The right arrow, you had it.
Yeah, my name's Steve Keller, I'm with Aon Hewitt Consulting Firm here in Columbus. I'm going to ask to do two things tonight, is to give you an update on the temperature of your health care program, on your premium claims, and also a brief, very brief overview of health care reform and what you're looking at as of 11/14, okay? On the screen here, I'll show the timeframe, just give you perspective of setting where we came from and where we're going now. we came from and where we're going now. These are the premiums and claim visual for the time period of September 2011 to August of 2012. Blue is premium, red is paid claims. For that time period, approximately 22.4 million dollars in premium was paid and approximately 21.8 million dollars in claims paid. That generated a loss ratio. The loss ratio is a dollar going in compared to a dollar coming back out, around 97%. Okay? So for every dollar you paid in, 97.4% came back out in claims. What typical insurance carrier wants to produce, since you're fully insured, is around 85-80% ratio. So at 97%, a little high, okay? But that's what that particular timeframe was, okay? So now, we go to the most recent time period, September 2012 through April of 2013. You'll see again, the somewhat level premium in the blue, you'll see right here is January 1st, okay? You'll see February, March, and April as the claims come down. The loss ratio for those months, for February was 75%, 76% in March, 64% in April. So the impact of the design that you came up with for 1-113, PPO plan and the HSA plan appear to be working. We assumed the claims would go down, I would not, I repeat, I would not anticipate this red line going, keep going down, even out. Matter of fact, before I got here, I was able to get pull off made claims, and the loss ratio is at 73%, so that has actually moved up just a pinch, but this should somewhat level up. But the point is, it's heading in the right direction, okay? Any questions on that at all?
How much of this level of, say, loss ratio do you need to experience before you start to get the premium benefit? So in other words, if we're running at, if the target's 85, we're running the high 60s, low 70s?
Mm-hmm.
Premiums should start to come down to reflect the better experience, right, at some points?
Yes, yes.
I know we're not experience rated, but some.
Well, no, you are experience rated, so, my standpoint, if you run at what they anticipate of 80-85%, you would probably expect a trend increase, and trend is high single digits, low double digits increase. To get no increase, you'd probably be, you'd have to be in a level of the 60s someplace. I don't anticipate that with what you did, but I also don't anticipate it being at 97-97% either. Okay, any other questions on premiums and claims piece?
Are you going to talk about, will that be all wiped out, the savings with new healthcare laws?
I'll, we'll get to that, we'll get to some, get the cost of that. Next, what I want to do is go over the healthcare reform items that are headed your way as an employer as a 1-114. Not, I'm going to talk about the individual mandate, or exchanges, all the other stuff, what you as an employer need to be aware of and focus on, what you have to deal with as a 1-114. First question, most employers have to deal with, is your plan affordable? It's a big question with healthcare reform, there's two questions you have to answer. The first, is your lowest costing plan, which is your HSA plan, does it have an actuarial value of 60% or more? What does that mean? An actuarial value of 60% or more means that if I anticipate a million dollars of claims, that my employees are going to generate a million dollars of claims, my plan would pay $600,000 in benefits back to them, okay? So for an expense of $1, you're going to pay 60 cents, okay? Your plan checks that box, you're much more, we have a calculator that the government's given us, your lowest costing plan is above 60%, so that, you answered that question, yes. You also have to answer the next question, yes, too. For a single employee contribution for the lowest costing plan, is it less than 9.5% of person's salary? And we've talked, Todd and I, we've talked to Emily Warbells, we've gone through that, an extremely high percentage of the people, I don't know if we've done anybody that didn't. Okay? So you've answered both of those questions, your plan is affordable, that's one of the things that you'll have to do in September, October, is provide information to your employees to say, is our plan affordable or not? And you include the paragraph, yes, your plan is affordable. What that does is that there's no penalties that you have to pay for healthcare reform, there's also no subsidies that the employees, that if they go to the exchange, that they'll get. Person only gets subsidies if an employer's plan is not affordable, your plan is, you're One of the confusing things with, I think, healthcare reform is that it affects everybody differently, depending on your size, depending if you're self-funded, if you're fully insured, if your grandfather or not, and all these other things will be dealing with a day. The next item is hours worked, this is a huge issue for a lot of employers. As a 1-114, the government is saying that the line in the sand to offer healthcare to anyone that works for you is 30 hours. If they average 30 hours or more per week, you as an employer have to offer them healthcare. You already do that, okay? So you're good, you're good in that situation. Some employers, they're, they offer it 38 hours or 40 hours. Everybody has to be down to 30 hours as a 1-114, but you're already there, and that's not an issue. Also, from a part-time, variable hour standpoint, that affects a lot of employers, retail, hospitality, restaurants. In your situation, we might be a few, we might have to measure, but nothing, a handful of people that we might have to measure to determine if they work 30 hours or more, and if so, offer them healthcare, okay? So I think you're, you're good in that situation, too. Small piece, you're not allowed to have more than a 90-day waiting period as a 1-114. Your waiting period is the first of the month, following the date of hire. Check the box, you're good. I have a couple employers have a year waiting period, they're going to move it all the way back to less than 90. That affects them, it doesn't, it won't affect you. Next item. Okay, this might have a potential impact on you. Healthcare reform in the Supreme Court last year in June said that everybody technically has to have healthcare coverage as a 1-114, okay? Assuming people follow those instructions, some people that don't have healthcare coverage, for whatever reason, might be coming back into your plan. Right now, we've calculated that there's 385 employees who have waived coverage, they don't, they didn't sign up. We assume, like most employers, extremely high percentage of those people didn't sign up because they have healthcare coverage someplace else, okay? However, if they don't, we're anticipating, you know, maybe 2, 3, 4% of those people might come back into your plan, or they might say, I don't want coverage on my spouse's plan anymore, or whatever else, I want to go back in the old entangency plan. So that 385 number right here could be 2, 3, 5, 10, 15 people, not sure, but the point is that you might have somebody come back into your plan, and the average composite cost is around $15,000 in premium. So whether it's two people, five people, or 10 people, that might have a impact.
It's, will be charged if they're, if they stay out of the plan, like they'd like to not to take the coverage?
That's their individual decision, if they decide not to have it, that's up to them, there's no charges, no penalty for you because you offer it in a affordable plan. If they decide not to enroll in it, then that's their fault, okay? But they can go out and get it through the exchange, they can go out and get it through the, as long as they're covering their spouse's plan or whatever, there's no issue there, okay? To go back to the first point about having an affordable plan, okay? So, very small potential, but something you need to at least be aware of. Okay, heard a lot of comments, and maybe you've heard on the radio or TV about healthcare reform fees and the hidden costs or else, well, they're not hidden, it's just kind of hard to find in the 15,000 pages of regulations. We're going to talk about them tonight. And there are fees that you need to be aware of, that you will be paying as a result of healthcare reform. First one is something called the temporary reinsurance fee. The temporary reinsurance fee is, is a fee for healthcare reform that will fund and stabilize the premium for the state and federal exchanges for individual and small groups. It is a fee of $63 per covered member, belly button, okay? It's not per employee, it's per belly button. So that charge, that cost will be loaded into your medical mutual rates, and they, when you pay that premium, they'll carve that piece off, they will send that to the government. Okay, it's been word about filling out the forms, since you're fully insured, it's the carrier's responsibility to do that. But that's going to be an increase in your premium because of that particular fee.
Is that going to be a fixed fee, or that varies from year to year?
Uh, that has a chance of, I'm not sure about the word temporary, I wouldn't put too much money on that. But it, it could be an increase in fees in the future, we don't know that yet, but $63 is the number for 2014. But everybody, everybody gets that charge, can't avoid that, can't change your plan, it's $63 per belly button, okay? The next fee is the insurance carrier market share fee, this is just to help finance healthcare reform in general. All the insurance carriers, depending on their market share in each state, will be assessed a fee based on the amount of business that they have. It also applies to dental, and this small piece, because of the premium level, but medical care obviously is the biggest piece, MMO's percentage is going to be 2.4% for 2014. Again, that will be loaded into the rates, and they'll carve that off, and they'll send that to the government. Again, that represents another cost increase that you have.
Who has to pay that, is that, that's up to our option, or does that have to be paid by the district or the employee?
It's a healthcare reform assessment to the insurance carriers, and they in turn will pass it along to you in your premium rates. And can you divide that among their employee share? If the employee share is 80-20, that can be included in that cost. The thing you need to be aware of is that in 2014, this market share fee is less than it generated about $8 billion in revenue in 2014. In 2015 and 16, it's targeted to generate $11.3 billion, okay? In 2017, $13.9 billion. In 2018, $14.3. So I'm assuming that 2.4% will increase over those years, along with everybody that's fully insured. If you're self-funded, you don't pay this. This is probably going to be probably the more confusing one of evening, and this is what's recently clarified by the federal government for healthcare reform. We need to understand how your plan works right now. Right now, your plan, I'm going to talk about the PPO plan just for a second. The PPO plan has an annual out-of-pocket maximum of $1,250. And what that means is that the 10% co-insurance that the employee pays, once they pay out $1,250 in a calendar year, then the plan pays 100% for the rest of the calendar year on those covered expenses. Those covered expenses do not include the deductible, they do not include the office visit co-pays, the emergency room co-pays, the prescription drug co-pays. So you could have somebody with a large medical expense, huge hospitalization bill, but then every time they go to the doctor, $15, every time they go to the emergency room, it's extra $200, every time they have prescription drugs, it's more money, okay? That's the way your plan works now, okay? As a 1-114, the government says, okay, an out-of-pocket has to apply to all expenses that employee pays. So as a 1-114, again, for your PPO plan, you are deductible, we'll go to that out-of-pocket maximum, all co-pays for prescription drug, office visits, emergency room, project care, all those go into that calculation to hit that $1,250. And with, if the wheels are turning here, what that represents is that that will put more pressure on that $1,250 out-of-pocket, more people will meet that, and from an insurance carrier standpoint, we're in the process of finding out from them what increase that will represent. But that won't be an increase if you don't change that $1,250 number there, then that will represent an increase in rates because of that additional liability that MMO will take on, okay? That's probably the thickest thing that we'll talk about tonight, so we'll pause there for a second. And again, that's, it's not just picking on Olentangie, that's all plans. And extremely high percentage of the plans work the way your plan works right now, that the co-pays and the deductible stuff don't go to the out-of-pocket, but the majority of plans will have moved to that as a 1-114. The last item on, is that the maximum allowed for out-of-pockets, four plans for 2014, $6,350 for single, $12,700 for family, and that will be tied to some type of inflation rate in the future, and the government will tell here, just like HSA's, what that number will be, okay?
So that $12,500 is our current PPO out-of-pocket, that's us specifically?
That's yours specifically, yes, for the PPO plan.
And what, what is it on the HSA?
$3,000, $3,600.
That was the deduct, that was the out-of-pocket maximum and not the deductible? Trying to remember the out-of-pocket maximum and not the deductible.
That's a little.
Yeah, I don't remember.
I don't have, that one's there right now.
But that'll also be true in that plan as well?
Yes, yes, and it will also be subject to that, those limitations, too. Those are actually the HSA limitations.
That's the HSA ones.
And they're going to connect it with regular PPO plans, okay?
Okay, thanks, Carl.
The last one, and I just bring this up, this is already in play, the PCORI fee. This is a fee that is used to fund research for the better understanding of specific medical treatment and outcomes as part of healthcare reform. That is already in play for 2012, it was a dollar per nose, per member. Again, MMO is applying that in the billing statement, and payable by July of 2013, it goes $2 in 2013, payable in 2015. So that's another fee that's already in play, that's already been charged by MMO, and that's on their billing statement, and they charge that fee, and they will collect that, and they will pass that along to the government.
So why is this per nose and the others per belly button?
Well, excellent question. That's what I had for healthcare reform, and that's extremely high level and extremely brief, but those are the major pieces that are coming at you as a reporter for 1-114. Any other questions?
Questions, no? Did you send the salary?
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Very helpful. Next up is Jack Fettie, the CIP update state report card response.
We distributed a copy of a draft CIP each of you before the meeting, we probably have them piled in front of you somewhere by now. I don't have any slides this evening, but so I just want to walk you through some of our recommended changes to the CIP. The question, take a look at them and bring them back, we want to bring them back to the board for approval, ideally in July, because the CIP guides all of the building improvement plans for next school year. Not too long ago, I presented you with the annual report for the 11-12 school year, as you recall, we had a wait for embargo data to become available. At that report, I said to you that success is not static, and that continuous improvement is an ongoing process, and the CIP in this district really drives that process. There are some changes needed, though, to it in order to align with the new state report cards, so that we're measuring what the state is measuring in addition to the things that we want to measure locally. Also, while I'm speaking briefly, Dr. Lucas asked that while I talk about the CIP, I mentioned some of the specific interventions we're doing related to the new report card in terms of areas where we're not yet earning As in those simulations that we looked at a couple of months ago, because a lot of this drives those interventions that are geared towards getting us to the point of having all As in all buildings as soon as possible. The first benchmark, and these are all my recommendations, I won't just continue what I'm recommending, but I'll say what's on the draft. The first benchmark is unchanged, that's the benchmark of projected performance levels, we calculate internal projections, and that benchmark is number one for a reason, it's really the major driver of our building intervention plans that we create at the beginning of each year. We generate internal projections for each student, for students who are projected not to be proficient. Buildings develop intervention plans, and we have specific funds in the curriculum department set aside for those plans, to run extra interventions for students in those areas of need. So, and that's, you know, looking at general passage rates in all subjects and all grade levels. So when a building sees that, say, fifth grade math has, you know, 12 students who are projected not to be proficient, their intervention plan would be directed at what can we do for those 12 students in addition to what's being done in the regular classroom to meet their needs, to get them to the point by the end of the year where they are proficient and they are passing. So that's a major way that will impact our state report card.
Sorry, you said that's one of our own benchmarks, or that was to combat against the, or comply with the simulated report Or that was to combat against the, or comply with the simulated report card?
No, that is one of our own and that's unchanged. That's been one of ours for, I want to say, 10 years now since we've had this CIP. Benchmark two is to facilitate a year or more growth for instruction. That's a value-added measure. And that benchmark itself hasn't changed, but you'll see some of the notes there. A year or more of growth is the equivalent of an A, a B, or a C on the new report card. We explained that the last time as well, that we're going from above met and below measures to A, B, C, and D. And a C is the equivalent, a C and a B are the equivalent of met. And an A is the equivalent of above. So we're just clarifying that, but that language isn't actually changing. What is changing is we're adding three indicators there to benchmark two for gifted students, students with disabilities, and students in the lowest 20% statewide in terms of achievement because those are all going to be components of the new state grade card. And in those areas, those are some areas where we did not have As as well. So in addition to building-level interventions run by gifted intervention specialists and intervention specialists in the building in conjunction with the building principal. Some other things that we are doing to address those needs to get us to the place of all As is historically, we followed a staffing pattern that was equal building by building. We opened 15 buildings and staffed them in terms of gifted services as though they were all the same. And now we look at our gifted population. Certain buildings have higher populations than others. So we're changing that model to, so that resources follow the need. And buildings with 220 gifted students will have more gifted support than a building with 20 gifted students and so on. So that's an example of a change that we're making at the district level to address that element of the report card in addition to ongoing professional development, targeted instruction to meet the needs of those students in the classroom. The people service department is also restructuring how their supervisors serve buildings. And of course, intervention plans for individual students are designed to meet their needs. That's monitored on an ongoing basis. Benchmark three, we are proposing changing. The first indicator there, the percentage of students who will score proficient from 75 to 80%. And that is a direct response to the state's increased bar. It used to be for, to meet an indicator at a grade level, 75% of the students needed to be proficient. The state's raising that to 80%, so it only makes sense that that's reflected on our CIP. We're also saying that we will increase or maintain a PI of 108 because that's the level for, to earn an A. You have to, a building or a district needs a 108 or higher to have an A. Most recent data, we're at 107.3 for the 11-12 school year.
But what would be comfortably in the A category? So the 108 out of...
120 is the highest. I think what, the highest district is 112?
112, yeah.
So the 1...
Sure. And our 107.3 that we currently have is still top 6.4% in the state. And then annual measurable objectives, that's really just a language change. The state is changing AYP, which is adequate yearly progress, to a calculation of annual measurable objectives. So that's really just a simple language.
What are the subgroups?
There's 10 subgroups within AYP or annual MMOs. Subgroups are all students, students with disabilities. Then they go through the different racial groups as well. Also within benchmark, or down to benchmark four then, in the first indicator, you'll see that we're proposing increasing or maintaining the percentage of students at the advanced or accelerated rate levels from 50% to 60%. Advanced accelerated students help to increase our PI. So if we're striving for a higher PI of 108, that's a way to do it. That's the best way to do it, is to get more students scoring advanced and accelerated. Historically, over the past few years, generally, we've had success meeting that 50% benchmark. So the 60% is a more rigorous benchmark, but we believe it's attainable. So it's a, I think it's a good move to raise that one if we're trying to get to 108. Also, within benchmark four, increase or maintain 65% of juniors and seniors participating in AP. We're proposing increasing that to 50%. Our advanced placement program is very popular and we haven't had trouble in the past couple of years meeting that 50% benchmark. And we're including dual enrollment to that calculation as well for students who pursue dual enrollment courses. We have expanded AP offering to the sophomore level as well in certain subjects. The sophomores are taking AP classes. But we want to keep this measure at a junior, senior measure because few sophomores take it. If you include the entire population of sophomore class, it increases your denominator significantly. But increasing this here for juniors and seniors still motivates the high schools to increase the percentage of sophomores taking AP so that they see they can do it and then they re-enroll in other classes for juniors and seniors. Moving down to benchmark five, graduates prepared for educational and vocational pursuit of their choice. Only in that last benchmark, previously, we said that our high schools will be ranked in the top 500 according to the Challenge Index, top 500 nationwide. But we do get annual reporting from, and the Challenge Index is from Washington Post. We get that as well from U.S. News and World Report and Newsweek. So we figured it would make more sense to specify the three publications that we look for in that report, best high schools annually. Because we hold ourselves, you know, accountable for, we want to make those lists as well, not just the Washington Post list. So that's just a matter of specifying those publications. Another note is the old benchmarks four, five, and six are condensed here. In the benchmarks four and five, there was a benchmark for increasing the levels of advanced and accelerated learners. And it was kind of redundant with the other two benchmarks that you still see here. So we're removing, and we're proposing to remove that benchmark. But that's entitled only. All of the indicators that we measure remain. They're just included in benchmarks four and five. It's a more coherent way to do it, in my opinion. We have a committee with principals look at this as well, I should say. Lastly, benchmarks six is from the treasurer's office. Benchmark seven from human resources. Those were formerly seven and eight, but again, because we're reduced by benchmark, the numbers have moved. There's no proposed changes at this time. Todd and Gail and Jeff Gordon Hall took a look at those benchmarks and felt that they were accurate and sufficient at this time. And lastly, benchmark eight is a benchmark that I think the board, we've talked, Dr. Lucas and I and the district leadership team talked about benchmark eight. It's one that probably needs to be discussed. And we've discussed it actually as we approved this CIP last summer and as we, I think it was mentioned even when we did the annual report a month ago or so. This benchmark is a little ambiguous. It's hard to measure. One of the indicators is our community survey results, being that we report on these results annually and we only give the community survey roughly every 18 to 24 months. It doesn't really fit here. And also, the continuous improvement committee and the family civic engagement team activities have kind of been absorbed, departed into other committees. So in name and in function, they don't exist as they once did. So I think Dr. Lucas had mentioned, and he probably shared with you, you know, he had a board retreat that is yet to be scheduled, I believe, in some time in July. He's going to ask that you take a look at that benchmark eight. Because right now, it's one that's hard to measure and it doesn't, for lack of a better term, belong to anybody in terms of anyone facilitating that specifically. Dr. Lucas mentioned that a lot of the community involvement is present is his own personal goals that the board sets for him. So the discussion would be, does it need to be included in the continuous improvement plan? Should the benchmark be removed? But if it does stay, it needs to be configured so that it can be measured annually. So again, just presenting this to you for discussion so that you can talk amongst yourselves and at the board's retreat. And then again, we'd like to have it approved prior to the start of the school year, really by when principals return and we present it to them the last week of July, August 12, somewhere around that time, so that we know these numbers are approved. So either we can bring back the first seven benchmarks in July for approval if the board wants to take more time on benchmark eight or if the retreat happens before the July meeting and you have a final version to adopt then. That would be ideal for our purposes because again, building CIPs are built based on the district CID. So all the specific measurable goals that they set are dependent on the numbers within this, within this document. So if you want to suggest tweaks to any of the numbers that presented as well, we just want to know what the board approves so that we can then do the work.
I might add, so the typical process, we've had administrative input. We now take this to our retreat as a board and this would be, the strategic planning piece would be one big piece of the board retreat. And this CIP ties in specifically with that strategic planning piece. So we would discuss the changes. And I would also suggest, and Jack has already mentioned, benchmark eight, we need to really refine that. And not to say community engagement is not important. It's very important. I think that's the discussion we have to have at our retreat. And what does that benchmark really look like? How do we know if we've attained that goal? What, how do we want to frame that whole piece? So this will be a big piece of our conversation at our retreat.
It has to be measurable.
Absolutely.
So if we're not taking a survey and we're not doing that, it can't be well, I think everyone likes us.
Yeah.
I don't want to make it a benchmark that isn't measurable.
Right. But I think the conversation we had is, so do we want to go from 18 months to every year? Do we really want to know specifically? I think those surveys tell us a lot of different things about our school district. And do we want to make that part of the CIP and say, we will conduct a community survey yearly?
Are those sent out to just parents or is it to the community?
Random.
Random, everybody.
We usually get approximately 500 people that respond. Paul Fallon runs that survey. And as you know, Paul comes to the board and gives a complete explanation of what's going on out there. Some of those questions are very consistent that we've asked for years and some are questions that we want to know as a board and as a school district. So I think that's a big conversation. And again, it is a cost.
Yes, it is.
But is the cost worth the benefit that it brings us?
And does the survey change at March 12?
Right.
So, well, a couple of things for practical. We're scheduled for July 9th is our next business session. We don't have a retreat scheduled until August.
We don't have a meeting scheduled till August.
August 8th and then August 27th.
He's talking about doing an extra meeting.
Actually, July.
And I believe last year, we did it 20th of July in that neighborhood.
We did it at the Columbus State.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
And I would suggest we do it there again. I think that was a very good conversation, a good session.
I think our, that's a big deal, but I think our calendar refers to that on the date that August means our retreat. It actually says that, not that it can change.
No, it's a work session. It's a work session and a meeting in August.
August 8th, we have a community dialogue and a work session. August 27th is the business session. So yeah, I would be supportive of a separate meeting late in July. I don't know what schedules look like. We have Terry to work on that.
Yes.
But I would also say, we need to refine benchmark six as well. The majority, it's just the last one. We have yet to define that last one. I'm sure we can fix that some.
Yeah.
Looking to refine, you said six and eight?
Mm-hmm. Six in particular, yeah. But that work session would, it'd need more detail on the others as well.
I was just going to say, in the community survey, I think that the taxpayers are kind of your community survey by if they pass your levies. I think you could probably gear it more towards the parents in here as a benchmark. Like for the teachers at the end of the year to review those. Do you see what I'm saying?
No.
No.
Okay.
What are you saying?
Well, I'm saying that this has a community survey. So we're sending it out randomly to people in the community that may not have children.
Right.
But the response, the people that don't have the children are going to, you're going to get their survey by when they go to vote. Your tax, they go, I think we should have one with the communities, the parents, for their students in the classroom, for the teacher, how they rate them. They consider that in here.
But then someone like Carl wouldn't be included in the community survey. I mean, he's probably more active than a lot of our parents and I'd hate to lose his voice in any, you know, I hate exclusion.
But you can do a community survey too. I think we could add a piece of it with the parents because they're our, I mean, the children are our clients, but you know, and the parents, feedback from them.
Mr. Fallon does a very, you know, his scientific method, you know, the demographics he chooses, takes in parents, takes in non-parents. And he traditionally does that and has for, not in ill-intention,
He does it for...
Across the country.
Yeah.
I mean, nationwide. So it's a very reputable individual and company that does that survey.
I don't doubt that. I would just say, if you're going to have a community survey piece, we could add an apparent response also.
Yeah, I think that would be discussion at our retreat.
And he breaks it out.
So we're not going to resolve this.
But he does break it out by parent and non-parent.
And even, they are a parent which elementary mill high.
Right.
So it's cut, you know, really well. So let's kind of focus that dialogue to the retreat. We'll get Terry to work on the retreat. The two main things we're going to focus on is six and eight. And then comfortable there and then obviously come with the rest.
I'll have her send that out tomorrow for potential dates for retreat. Okay?
Thank you. Any other questions, Terry? Thank you. Jack, well done. Next up is Mr. Rafe, the athletic handbook for 2014.
Good evening. Thank you very much. You should have in your exhibit the proposed recommended athletic handbook changes. They are not too extensive this year. Just to explain the process a little bit. Handbook changes come about if there's legislation, or HSA bylaw changes, those kinds of things. If there's any of our own specific school board policies that trickle in through the athletic student handbook or athletic handbook, any languages. We had some of the Title VI language previously that was changed. So that's one source. Another source comes from our coaches with recommended changes, issues that they're dealing with. Those are then presented to the athletic directors. The athletic directors also bring changes that are discussed with the principals. And then myself, once we synthesize all the changes, we present those changes to our athletic council, which is a group of about 45 people consisting of coaches, administrators, parents. We have actually one community volunteer, Mr. Abraham volunteers on the athletic council also. And so those proposed changes went through the athletic council also. So we, you know, have the, these for you to consider. The majority of them are just minor language changes. The one that I would call your attention to is within regards to the drug testing, the drug and alcohol policy. We are recommending that we increase the first offense denial of privilege from 25% to 50% of the total contest.
So half a season?
Correct. And currently, the current practice is that students that are, that have an offense are denied privilege for 25% of the season. If they participate in the drug and alcohol counseling program, they can have that reduction, that denial of privilege reduced to 10% of the season. And we're just, we're at the point where we feel that's just not enough. Kids are willing to give up two games to take the risk of using drug and alcohol. So we're recommending something that's a little stiffer of a denial of privilege and hopefully will be a better deterrent for our student athletes.
Does it test for tobacco also? I mean, mind or mood-altering chemicals, I would think.
Yeah, it's alcohol, tobacco, controlled substances, mood-altering chemicals, tobacco, alcohol.
How are the, the random urine drug testing is done? Is it on a certain day you do them? Like what if the kid has a cigar with his dad, comes in on Monday, gets tested?
They, it all depends on when the test occurs. Sometimes the test can, well, if they have a cigar with their dad, they are violating the drug and alcohol policy. So, and we have had that where parents have come in and said they were drinking with me. They know it's a violation of the drug and alcohol policy and we have to enforce the drug and alcohol policy. It's a denial of privilege. So typically, what happens in the random drug testing program, once you agree to participate in athletics, you are put into the testing pool. We randomly test 15% of the active student athletes that are in-season and then 10% of the student athletes that are out of season. So it depends by season how many we pull every week. So it depends by season how many we pull every week. Say it's upwards of 50 or so every week and-
Every season or week?
It's every week.
Fifty every week?
Mm-hmm.
And so if you're playing basketball, but it's baseball season, you could still be pulled?
Correct. Yes, because we pull, we pull a higher percentage of the student athletes that are actively involved in-season than another percentage of kids. Once you're in the pool, you're in the pool for four years unless you sign yourself out and say, "I'm not participating in athletics anymore," then we remove your, remove your name from the testing pool.
See, when did it start back up again?
This year.
Which, I'm sure we started it back up this year. Do we estimate what the cost is for that?
We assess the fees.
I remember what it was last time, when you guys dropped it.
I'm sorry?
I remember what it was last time, it was a savings cut.
I know. Do you have that number? I'm sorry, I don't know that.
I thought we increased the participation.
We did.
We did.
To cover the cost of the-
Yes, we did increase the participation to cover the cost. We did, we stopped testing in the middle school, which helped. We were testing fewer athletes than we had previously. Something we were doing in the past that was a significant cost was that we were testing student athletes-
Everybody.
-prior to the start of every season. Well, the kids knew the test was coming, so we found out that was our lowest positive response. So, because the kids, if they were choosing to use, they stopped a month before the season. So we stopped doing that, and that was a significant cost there. But we did up the participation piece a little bit to bring it back.
Up to been on captain. At least at the family cap.
Right.
Right. For the academic requirements, for the passing, is it still the 1.5 GPA?
Correct. Yeah, and we discussed that at, actually, three Athletic Council meetings. We had a lot of good, very, very good discussion on it.
And it just looks like you guys are, the policy's tougher on tobacco than it is on grades.
Well, it's illegal.
Well, but our focus is education. I just think that we could raise the GPA, just like I argued last time, so. To at least, like, NCAA is going to have 2.3 for requirements?
Our students who are going to Division One schools don't have a problem. When we looked at this in 2012, I did extensive research. We require more graduation credits than the majority of central Ohio schools. We do not weigh honors classes. We do not accept journalism as an English course. All of our kids from nine to 11 are taking college prep English, so our rigor is there.
The standard is not, though. We could boost it up.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Jeff Gordon, update on drug issues, drug testing program?
Can you just put together some numbers based on the information we were asked for? The first sheet you will see on the front page is the summary of the K-9 searches for each building for last, this last period we just finished up. You can see, just for example, on the first one, and I won't go through all of them for sake of time, but that's middle school. Interior of the building was searched, there were zero hits. That means the dogs did not set on any particular area or locker that was an issue. As the dogs are going through, they're generally passive dogs, so they'll sit down in front of a locker and identify that locker. Now, what the SROs will tell us from the Sheriff's Department is that they pick up a scent. That scent, they may sit down in front of locker, locker number three, but that scent could be coming from locker one or two or four or five, a couple lockers on either side of it. So generally, when they'll do a search, they'll search a few lockers on each side of that locker, just to make sure that we don't inadvertently identify the wrong locker, the wrong space. The dogs, while they're good, aren't, you know, can't necessarily identify that space versus that space. So, you can see, just for another example, on 1018 at OHS, or, I'm sorry, Orange High School, interior parking lot searched, they had two hits on interiors, so the dogs stopped at two lockers. The lockers were searched and nothing was found when they searched it. They had two hits in the parking lot, again, nothing found, and cars were searched. Generally, what they tell us that means is, at some point, there's a scent. So while there may not have been drugs found in the locker, there may have been scent on a jacket, or scent on a bookbag, or, let's say, in the case of cars, it could have been a scent that was in a car, and that scent could have been, maybe the car was bought two months earlier, it was somebody else, and students driving it, and there had been drugs in there previously, but they still may have that scent. So just the fact that they hit on it doesn't necessarily mean that there's drugs there, but it does mean at one time there was drugs there, there has been something, something in that location. Down at the bottom of that graph identifying the SROs is a labeled drug alcohol occurrence investigated by the SROs. These are listed as any drug incidents where the SROs have investigated at the buildings that you see there. Directly below that is drug and alcohol occurrence handled administratively. Now, there may be overlap between those two. On the administrative end, there are things like cigarettes and tobacco that fall under that. The bottom graph, drug alcohol handled administratively, is what's reported through our systems in state, the Ohio required reporting. So that could include, again, things like tobacco and cigarettes, and there may be more in there than you'll see above because of that. So there's some overlap and some difference there, just to give you a general idea of what we looked at at each building. And then to address what Mr. Rafe was talking about, the second page is mainly a summary report from our drug testing vendor, and that gives a, what I'll show you is the statistics for all tangi of the schools, the random drug testing. Positive rate 2012 and 13 was 2%. And this number is, takes the total number of positive tests or refusal. A student can refuse to take a test, which is considered a positive. So when you take that percentage, it gives us a 2% hit. In 2010 and 11, the positive rate was .44. So as you can see, there's a significant increase from one year to the next. And the national average is 2.5%, and the Ohio average is 1.33%.
If you refuse to test, you get ding, right? I mean, with the 50% or-
I'm going to ask Mr. Rafe to address that, because I'm not sure how that falls.
All right. Would you agree to participate in athletics if you refuse to participate in the random drug testing, because that's considered a positive? And that's outlined in the alcohol, tobacco, and random drug testing section?
So, question on it. So, on this reason for test, one of the reasons is the follow-ups. And on the follow-ups, sevens are positive, so that means, I want to make sure I interpret that correctly, so of the 29 hits, are seven of them repeats? Is that how it should be followed up?
What happens, once somebody, once somebody is tested positive, they stay in the testing pool for, they agree to be tested subsequently for the next five weeks. So what we ask, what we look for is that the levels, let's just say they tested positive for marijuana, that the test is very sensitive, you can tell what the levels are. And in that case, in order to be reinstated, you have to have levels that are going down. So they may still have tested, technically could have tested positive, and in that, in the old, with the old rule of two weeks, but we want to see that the levels are going down.
So, the positives were unique instances of hit, of-
Correct.
I'll just wait and see. The Drug Task Force?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis, is that, is that going to be made up with all in Tangi staff?
Yes.
I just kept you here, you were talking fast, I wanted to ask you that.
Yes.
Combined.
Just a quick recap.
Yeah.
Because, so, concerning that, while we're below the national average or above the Ohio average, and certainly above where we've been historically, and so I think the actions you're taking are good, be good to recap.
Yeah, we actually started discussing that Drug Task Force probably in February. And at that time, we, I believe Mr. Wright actually volunteered. I don't want to say we said, "You're doing this, Randy." He volunteered to kind of head this up, which we were very proud of him for doing so. And then, two weeks ago, when I had the county superintendent's meeting, Steve Hedge came forward and said that the sheriff, Sheriff's Department, the mental health services were also interested. So we're not only going to start that Drug Task Force here, you know, in Tangi, but it's going to be a county-wide effort. And, you know, you look at these numbers and you say, "Well, those numbers are low," but one is too many, obviously. And, you know, I think what we had discussed was the fact that when you know that you're, the potential for losing time is on the line, and you're still coming up positive, that's not a good sign. And we by no means want to stick our head in the sand and say, "Nothing going on here." I think this is something we've looked at for, you know, three years or so, and said, "We're going to start moving forward in a positive manner." Not in a punitive manner, but in a, we want to help our kids. We absolutely want to help our kids, and, you know, we have a very affluent clientele, and with that sometimes comes all the temptations of life, as we all know. So therefore, the whole objective of the task force is not to say, "I got you." It's to say, "We're here to, you know, to educate our staff, to educate our kids, to educate our parents into making it a more positive lifestyle choice."
I have a question on the Ohio average. Seems low, but I wonder how many schools are testing?
Right.
Because I know some districts like ours, we cut it, you know, due to financial reasons. So-
When we discussed the task force, you know, we decided at that point, we had a lot of anecdotal evidence. We didn't have the new data in on the, on the new drug testing, brand-new drug testing program. That's when we decided to have all of our high school and middle school students participate in the youth risk behavior survey. You received an email from a parent concerned about their children, their child participating in that survey. But that, that was a decision we made to have our kids participate voluntarily in that, in that survey with this information. And all of these types of policies, they're not punitive. Education is the key. Having them serve as a deterrent, you know, kids need a reason to say no, whether it's fear of their father, or random drug testing, or whatever, but, you know, they need a reason to say no. Denial of participation. One thing we did discuss in Athletic Council when we were talking about the denial of participation, we did talk about expanding denial of participation to other areas. Because the courts have relaxed their rules on, we could deny participation for anybody, or we could put anybody who is, gets parking passes in the testing pool. We could put all the visual performing arts students in the testing pool. So, I mean, those are things that I think are going to be talked about in our Drug Task Force to strengthen our current policies and administrative practices.
And we should put some sort of report out when you're ready of the Drug Task Force. What are the specifics?
Yes.
Go ahead and allow that, because your point is, it's not just the students, it's the parents-
Absolutely.
-in this district. Okay. Thank you, very good. Appreciate the report. Okay, that's it for discussion items. Vote participation session number two regarding action items. Do we have any?
No.
Okay, we now move to board action items. We have two, but they're related. So I'll take the motion to approve, and then I'll get some discussion that I'd like. So, I have a motion to approve Board Action Items A and B.
So moved.
Second.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay, on discussion. So, two separate items, but they're actually the same thing. So the action items are to approve Brian Curran as district treasurer for a three-year period. The second item is actually to approve him as, on an interim basis, to transition from his current responsibilities. So I just want to spend a minute recapping. So, you know, we've been through a process now from February through now. I would say a fairly exhaustive process to really vet some candidates. While on the outset, you know, I'll be honest, I thought we'd land in a different place. I think the process, and I'm sure it was here from OSBA, the process was very good at really challenging our thinking and frankly, making us think hard about what we, what our expectations are for treasurer and kind of what we're looking at. So we started with 10 to 12 applicants. We narrowed it to five, then we interviewed. We went through another process of three for a second round. It was not, you know, a slam dunk. It was certainly a good competitive process that I found very valuable, and I hope the rest of the board members that participated in the process thought it was valuable as well. So, with that, any other discussion?
I really appreciated the OSBA organization and support, and want that noted, that as an HR person, that was invaluable help and very well organized, and I appreciate that on their behalf.
Okay. We call the roll, please?
Ms. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Feesal?
Yes.
Mr. White?
No.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And before we move on to the next, Mr. Curran is here, I'd like to recognize him and thank his family for being here.
You guys don't have to come to every meeting.
I don't know if mine could have sat through this.
He has some ice cream, I think, after.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, Todd, the treasurer's, and I do, again, I want to thank Todd for his role as interim. He's been doing double duty now, you know, for three or four months, done a great job. Certainly appreciate the effort and the diligence you put in that work. So, thank you from the board, and I'm sure Dr. Lucas has sent it. Treasure action items, please.
Recommend approval of action, treasure action item B.
Oh, so where we have these pulled?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm pulling these out separate. I talked to Adam before.
So we're pulling out the financials separately?
Yes.
Good. So item B is the financials for the month of May. So that's a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Feesal?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. White?
No.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And I recommend approval of action items A, C, D, and E.
So that would be the minutes, appropriations, permanent appropriations, and the donations.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Feesal?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Superintendent action items?
Okay, let's do the, we have several different groups here. So I will present Superintendent action items A, 1, 2, 9 through 12, 19 through 21. Do you want to do the certified, you want to do certified, then classified, then the others? You want to do it that way?
Sure.
Okay. That's, I think that's probably the-
Is it the best way to bucket them?
Yes, maybe the cleanest way. So Superintendent action items A, 1, 2, 9, 10, 11, 12, 19, 20, and 21, for approval, please.
So let me just recap some. So 1 and 2 are the administrators-
Yes.
-and the certified individuals. 9 through 12, I guess it's the summer programs?
Mm-hmm.
19, including special education. 19 through 21-
Are resignations.
Are resignations.
Yes.
Okay.
So- So moved.
Thank you. You have a second? I'll second, thank you. Call the roll, please.
Ms. Feesal?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. White?
No.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And I present Superintendent action items A, 3 through 8, and A, 13 through 18, for approval, please.
So those would be administrative stipend for some sort of additional duties.
Yes.
The additional preparation compensation for extended service contracts, new teacher academy, certified positions paid through memorandum of billing, college prep English, professional development, cultural and religious diversity, more professional development, and then the people activity supervisors, supplemental positions, and people activity supervisors.
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Dunbar?
Yes.
Ms. Feesal?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. White?
No.
Okay, I present superintendent action items B, 2 through 6, please.
2 through 6 is everything but the additional service contract days, correct?
Correct. Yes.
So the resignations, classified deployment resignations, and retirements. Okay. I'll make a motion.
Second.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Dunbar?
Yes.
Ms. Feesal?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Present superintendent action items B, 1, for approval, please.
Additional service contract days?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So moved.
Second place.
I just have discussion on that.
Yes.
Just for clarification, it was when Scott Davis was here, he looked at additional service days, not just for classified, but also for certified people. And at that point, everyone was given extra days in the summer. He really looked at that and pared it back and said, "We are only going to grant these when necessary to those necessary." So that's the process that these go through now. It's not just a blanket, it's kind of like what you talked about with the technology department.
Correct.
10 days for the entire staff, not everyone. So I just wanted to point out to people that this is a different process that was used in the past, and they are scrutinized.
Right.
That's, I want to make sure, that's 10 total days?
Yes.
Not for the entire staff, but 10 total days. For example, if one staff member takes three days...
Then there's seven.
Seven left. Yes.
Ms. Feesal?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. White?
No.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Okay. Present superintendent action items C, D, E, G, I, J, and L.
All right, let me go through those, so we all...
Okay.
So student overnight trips, organizations at Berkshire, Berkshon, Orange.
Mm-hmm.
Approved language for interim, and of course, assessments.
Correct.
Government and history. A revised standard for musical and visual arts, the athletic, I'm sorry, not the athletic handbook, that's separate. The blacktop, so the tennis reconditioning at Orange and Liberty.
Mm-hmm.
And the school furniture purchase are being pulled out, or considered in this...
In this round.
Correct.
Okay. There's a motion on that, please.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Ms. Dunbar?
Yes.
Ms. Feesal?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
All right, present superintendent action items F, H, K, and M, for approval, please.
So F is the math textbooks.
Mm-hmm.
H is the athletic handbook. K is the solar heating equipment and storage water tanks for Shanahan.
Mm-hmm.
M is the sports medicine contract.
Correct.
And the SRO, additional SRO.
No, no, that's, that's a separate vote.
Separate one, okay. Okay. All right. Okay. Any discussion?
So moved.
I'm sorry, any motion or a second?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Dave, you can do this one.
No discussion, please.
Ms. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Feesal?
Yes.
Mr. White?
No.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And lastly, present superintendent action item N, for approval, please.
That's the additional SROs.
That's the additional SROs.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Is there any reason why they couldn't have been lumped in with the first group or the second group? Why they just called them separate?
I haven't made up my mind yet, abstaining.
Okay.
Ms. Feesal?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Abstained.
Okay. Is that everything?
That's it.
Thank you. Now, we're going to go back into executive session. We will not be coming back to take any action, so we'll all go back to adjournments. Do we do the amendments?